So they could easily live together with mutually distant parts to stay in Kentucky.
Do I have a motion to recombine the regular meeting? Alright, it's been motioned by Mr. Ives, and second by Mr. Travis. Roll call.
Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Cunha?
Yes. Alright. This time we're going to all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And if our Eagle Scouts, Robert and Ryan, will lead us on?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it's known, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ryan? Yep.
Good evening. Tonight we have two resolutions honoring two of our students. Would Ryan Donahue please come up to the front? This resolution is recognizing Ryan Donahue for achieving Eagle Scout status. Whereas Ryan Donahue, a sophomore student at Lockport Township High School District 205, has achieved Eagle Scout status, the highest rank awarded by the Boy Scouts of America, for his project volunteering his time to lead a group of scouts and leaders to build twelve Bluebird boxes and Predator Guards. They collected GPS coordinates for twelve existing boxes that the forest preserve place. The boxes helped the Bluebirds nest and increase their population. The Critter Guards helped to keep their eggs and babies safe from snakes, raccoons, and other predators. And whereas Ryan Donahue has brought honor and distinction to himself, his family, school, community, Troop Number 63, and Scout Master Mike Soderstrom. And now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that Ryan Donahue is hereby recognized for achieving the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout for the Boy Scouts of America on this twenty-third day of January 2023. Now this time with Robert Ryan, please come to the front. This resolution is recognizing Robert Ryan for achieving Eagle Scout status. Whereas Robert Ryan, a sophomore student at Lockport Township High School District 205, has achieved Eagle Scout status, the highest rank awarded by the Boy Scouts of America, for his project volunteering his time designing and building two recess equipment carts for the students at William J. Butler Elementary School. And he purchased all brand-new equipment to fill the two carts. And whereas Robert Ryan has brought honor and distinction to himself, his family, school, community, Troop Number 63, and Scout Master Mike Soderstrom. And now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that Robert Ryan is hereby recognized for achieving the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout from the Boy Scouts of America on this twenty-third day of January 2023. Congratulations.
Robert and Ryan, on behalf of the Board of Education, congratulations along with your parents too. I know all your hard work and perseverance gave you the son, biggest, highest honor here from Boy Scouts. And I hope that you are an inspiration to those young Boy Scouts that are just right behind you. But again, I congratulate you and thank you so much and we are so proud of you. Alright, do I have a motion to accept the resolutions as presented? Alright, it's been motioned by, it's been motioned by Mr. Ives and second by Mr. Travis. Roll call.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Shaw? Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Travis?
Yeah.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez Cunha?
Yes.
Yeah, President, and I'd just like to make a housekeeping request and make a motion to just adjust the agenda slightly and move the action considerations, item L. If we could move it forward and proceed now right after the resolutions if, hey, if that motion's agreed by the fellow board members.
Alright, you're making the motion?
I am.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, alright. Just a roll call then.
Travis?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Lopez Cunha?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, moving then to action items. Action on student number 205-03-08-18.
I move that based upon and after the Board's consideration of evidence and testimony of the expulsion hearing held January 12th, 2023, the Board of Education finds that student number 205-03-08-18 has committed an act of gross misconduct as charged by the district's administration, that student number 205-03-08-18 committed gross disobedience or misconduct of Board Policy 7:190, Student Behavior. I move that the Board of Education expels student number 205-03-08-18 from Lockport Township High School District Number 205 for the remainder of the '22-'23 school year and the entire school year of '23-'24. Prior to considering a recommendation for expulsion, the district's administration attempted other behavioral and disciplinary interventions and determined there are no other appropriate and available behavioral and disciplinary interventions. The interventions previously attempted with the student included Behavioral Improvement Center, restorative practices, deans conferences, detentions, restorative practices, Rosecrans Assessment, which was refused, dean and counselor meeting, and he was placed in the Porter Academic Recovery Center. Removing student number 205-03-08-18 from the learning environment is in the best interest of the school because the student's continuing presence in school would pose a threat to the safety of other students, staff members, staff and members of the school community, and/or would substantially disrupt, impede, and interfere with the operation of school. The duration of student number 205-03-08-18's expulsion is appropriate based on the gravity of the misconduct, the safety concerns, and disruption caused by the misconduct and the prior interventions utilized to support the student and to promote acceptable behavior and acceptable means of conflict resolution.
You just need a second?
Second.
Alright, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw, second by Mr. Ives. Are there any questions or discussions to that motion? Alright, hearing none. Roll call.
Navarro?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Cunha?
Yes. Alright, action on student number 205-03-03-90.
I move that based upon and after the Board's consideration of evidence and testimony of the expulsion hearing held on January 12th, 2023, the Board of Education finds that student number 205-03-03-90 has committed an act of gross misconduct as charged by the district's administration and that student number 205-03-03-90 committed gross disobedience or misconduct according to Board Policy 7:190, Student Behavior. I move that the Board of Education expels student number 205-03-03-90 for the remainder of the '22-'23 school year and the entire '23-'24 school year. But that expulsion be held in abeyance and student number 205-03-03-90 be administratively transferred to an alternative school as determined by the district's administration pursuant to Article 13A of the Illinois School Code. Prior to considering recommendation for expulsion, the district's administration attempted other behavioral and disciplinary interventions that included warnings, detentions, Behavioral Improvement Center, conference with the student and parent, police notification, refer to the counselor and social worker restorative practice, and determined that there are no other appropriate and available behavioral and disciplinary interventions. Removing student number 205-03-03-90 from the learning environment is in the best interest of the school because the student's continuing presence in school would pose a threat to the safety of other students, staff and members of the school community, and/or would substantially disrupt, impede, and interfere with the operation of school. The duration of student number 205-03-03-90's expulsion is appropriate based on the gravity of the misconduct, the safety concerns, and disruption caused by the misconduct, and the prior interventions utilized to support the student and promote the acceptable behavior and acceptable means of conflict resolution. The expulsion being held in abeyance is contingent upon the student's full participation in the alternative school program, including regularly attending school, complying with attendance policies, school rules, and any referrals for service or counseling made by the alternative school, and successfully completing the alternative school's curriculum. I move that should student number 205-03-03-90 fail to fully participate in the alternative school program and the alternative school refers the student back to the district, student number 205-03-03-90 shall be immediately expelled from Lockport Township High School District Number 205 for the remainder of the district administration's recommended expulsion duration of the remainder of the '22-'23 school year and the entire '23-'24 school year.
I'll second it.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Lewandowski. Are there any questions or discussions to the motion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Cunha?
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Shaw. Alright, do I have a motion to approve the Lockport Reciprocal Reporting Agreement?
So moved.
It's been moved by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions or discussions? Alright, hearing none. Roll call.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez Cunha?
Yes. Alright, do I have a motion to approve the Trees Inner Governmental Agreement?
So moved.
I can second that. Are there any questions or discussions to that? Alright, it's been motioned by Mr. Ives and second by Lopez Cunha. Roll call.
Travis?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Lopez Cunha?
Yes. Alright, thank you. Alright, moving on. That takes care of our action consideration items. Next, moving on to our student reports, student government.
Hello.
Hello. How are you?
Hi.
Good. First thing we want to talk about was our counselors and how student gov and us on the board are very appreciative of what they do for us. However, we do feel there's a bit of a flaw in terms of when we go to pick and choose classes. On a few occasions, we've heard from people of student government that their counselors feel, their counselors are not as much asking them about their future plans or goals and instead they describe it as checking off a box is what some counselors do. So what they're hoping for is that counselors would emphasize, or would ask them more questions about what their plans are in terms, instead of just like accepting what classes they choose to take. For example, we have one of our board members who's not here tonight. She takes like three to four AP classes of a wide variety and yes, that is very beneficial. However, it puts more stress on her and also it could be, she could be taking more classes catered to what she will do in her future career and yeah.
I also want to touch on the AP and dual credit. I feel as though myself as an AP student, this year I'm taking three AP classes and one dual credit and I feel like the dual credit is not always pushed as much as the AP and I feel like a lot of students don't even realize some of the classes that we have at our school, such as like other dual credits. So I feel as though that some of the counselors could do more like weighing your options rather than going in with your options already picked. And then on top of that, we also want to talk about future planning for TWORP in February. The student government is really excited to start planning and getting ready for TWORP Week. And as a student government, we are planning a movie night, which we think will get rid of some of the winter blues that's associated with February and boosts morale amongst the school. And also we are starting to plan dress-up days, which will be confirmed at our next meeting, but very exciting for the student government.
Lastly, we have to touch on it every time, but in the lunchroom, our, some of our, have to. Some of our representatives feel like it's such a hit that another panini stand would, would do greatly for the school. Another panini stand.
It's a long line.
It's a long line.
Do you guys have any questions for us?
What movie were you going to watch for movie night?
We have three leading options at the moment, which are
Ten Things I Hate About You, Grease, and Forrest Gump.
Find out in a couple weeks.
So just a question about your previous concern about the counselors. So you're feeling like you come in with your classes checked, they just schedule you for your classes, but there's not really much of a conversation?
That's correct, yes.
I can confirm too. I guess it hasn't changed in the years since.
And you said dual credit classes are not being promoted?
Um, they're promoted, but I think a lot of students, they realize like AP credit and they don't think of like other options like college credit, which is still a viable option for getting college credit. But I feel as though that AP classes are more pushed, but a lot of kids feel like that's not in their realm because they've never taken AP classes when the college dual credit is still a great way to gain some of that credit at school.
I think like the biggest hurdle there is that a lot of people are just scared about AP.
That's right.
Because a lot of people like, they're like, oh, you can take college credit. And then people are always like, but what if I fail? But what if it's like too hard for me? Like, I'm just a high schooler. Why, why am I taking a college level class? So people, and what eventually happens is that they don't react, like, if I remember correctly, there are some classes that are not like college level, but they're, well, they're not like meant to push you to that extreme where like obviously like AP classes are much harder than high school classes. And a lot of people don't realize like, okay, you don't have to like work yourself to the extreme. You can like take this class and still get like college credit if I'm, if I'm remembering correctly.
You're correct. There's like, I'm in personal finance right now, which is a dual credit class. I wouldn't say it's to the extent, or to the like difficulty of an AP class, but it's still college course level information and it's still very manageable.
Yeah, it's, it's manageable. It's not like, I don't know, like there, there's just an inherent, even like I was scared of like AP classes. Even though like I, I knew that I was like more incapable to take them. Some of them just really intimidated me. I took like four AP classes and I never took the tests for them simply because I was just too intimidated. And I, I don't know, it was just like a fear of like, oh gosh, I'm gonna fail at everything that I don't want to like waste like eighty dollars just to like fail.
That's true. The cost is another point with dual credit that I feel like is not emphasized enough is that dual credit is significantly less money than paying for the hundred-dollar AP test fee, but you're still gaining the college credit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you guys. Have a good night.
You too.
Good night.
Tea report.
Hello, Happy New Year?
Happy New Year.
Since we last met, we were able to have our annual union holiday party, which was a huge success. Wanted to give a big shout-out to our community and area businesses that donated items for our staff raffle, which got us through our last week and made our party a success. So thank you to everyone out in the community who donated to that. As we start the third week of our new semester, you know, our PLCs are hard at work and working to see that all students succeed at high levels. And other than that, we're just excited to, to get back at, you know, and working. So that's about it. Thank you.
IASB Governing Board Report.
There is a couple of embedded, I gotta get my thing to work, topics in there. Dr. McBride, you want to cover those?
Sure, absolutely. Kind of just, you know, we haven't had much action with IASB, Three Rivers, things like that. But there are a couple of things to note. One, Mr. Navarro, just as we were gathering and setting things up, asked about COSPA. And, you know, this board's involvement in COSPA and where the Illinois Association of School Boards goes, we'll, we'll have to see. So COSPA is the Consortium of State School Board Associations. I don't have a lot of insight in why IASB and twenty-three other state school board associations broke away from the National School Board Association to form their own consortium. There were some policy disagreements, there were some disagreements about different stances to adopt, and that happened. So Illinois is now, now in COSPA. That doesn't require your membership as a board and the Illinois Association of School Boards doesn't require you to, you know, join COSPA, but you're, you're in COSPA by, by the nature of IASB.
By default?
By default. Your state association, that's what they've decided to join. They do have a national conference, their first national conference, which is March 30th, 31st, April 1st and April 2nd in Tampa, Florida. Probably over the next couple of weeks, the board should discuss if any of our members will represent us. At that, you know, typically you've had one or two members represent. You could conversely say, this is a new organization. Yeah, Mrs. Johnson?
The only thing I've been watching it is they have a skeleton agenda. They don't have anything out there telling you the topics. It says, you know, breakout session, but what are the breakout sessions?
Yeah, it's not very filled in.
No, it's not, well, it's not filled in at all.
Right. So if you go online, it, it's difficult to see what, you know, the conference. Whereas those of you who've gone to the, when it was National School Board Association, round for a long time, obviously very sophisticated. So just, I think that's out there, how the board feels. You know, I would probably encourage everyone to, you know, talk to Ann Lopez Cunha, how you feel about attending, not attending. Then the second thing is board protocols. In your binder towards the front, you had a board self-evaluation retreat. One of the things that we talked about is each board meeting, we might go over two of the eleven sort of governance protocols that you adopted. I think the purpose of that is to, just to remind each other as a board, as a team, and then also illuminate for the public. How is it that you, you operate? Why, why do you operate the way that you operate? You had eleven total protocols and your first two were board member expectations. I could certainly read them if, if that helped. And then also concerns from community and staff. Why don't I just go ahead and maybe read those and if there's any kind of board con, you know, comment. I think when we did our, your self-evaluation, Lori Grant from Illinois Association of School Boards really encouraged you to do this, just, just have a conversation and kind of remind yourself of the protocols you adopted. But board member expectations, board members will assume positive intent of each other. Board members will treat each other with respect and be open and honest with each other and the superintendent. Board members will speak professionally and keep discussions at board meetings relevant and focused. So it's kind of the work. I know Mr. Lewandowski, a fan of efficiency in a meeting. And then concerns from the community and staff, board members will listen carefully. Remember that they're hearing only one side of the story. Board members will then direct that person or persons in the district to a person in the district that's most appropriate to handle or resolve a concern. That always happens after a board meeting. And then board members handling concerns in this matter will clarify that when board member has no individual authority to fix a problem alone, none of us do that alone as board and superintendent. And then board members will call the superintendent if they think there is an issue of concern. If you ever have an issue, you know, we've, we've talked about that with our agenda. You know, really trying to foresee the agenda, something you might want to get on the agenda. Right as we began, Dr. Shaw said, hey, can we add this to your superintendent report? You know, of course we can. You know, just so she wanted to know a little bit more. So I don't know if there's any discussion about these two protocols of how you, you hope to operate? And I'll just, I'll leave it open for you. They're, they're really your protocols.
And then it's not, okay, but the next Three Rivers Division meeting is March the 22nd. And it's in Cankey Key. So, that's school district 111.
Okay.
Thank you for doing this.
That's all.
That's it? Alright, thank you. Alright, Foundation Board Report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm gonna be as brief as I can, since there's a report in there. Just wanted to highlight that there were new officers that were elected to the foundation at our January 10th meeting. And also at that meeting, members of the board each joined at least two committees. So we now have committees established, so you know, the awards So we now have committees established. So, you know, the awards committee will be responsible for reviewing all the nominations for awards that we would present. The scholarship committee, they're responsible for scholarships, you know, kind of as a whole, and the different events we host and things like that. So now there'll be a committee of at least three, uh, board members on each of the events that we, that we host. Um, a casino night is being planned with a tentative date of March tenth, um, and details will be available later this week. Um, the idea is to try and do something to break up the winter blahs and give people a, a fun night out. So you guys will be amongst the first to know. If there's an invitation in your mailbox, you'll know, you'll see that email. Um, there's a, we're developing a new website to kind of help tell our story and let people know who we are and what we do. Um, that will live and be accessible through the LTHS website through the district. Um, and the board is currently looking into kind of more and different community events that would involve families and with children or seniors, people that aren't in attendance at LTHS so that we can, you know, kind of still be that hub for our community. So they're working on, you know, the, we're researching a couple of different options to try and, and pull those off as well. And then hot off the presses, uh, we just confirmed with the chat, with Lockport, uh, that we are gonna bring back The Taste of Lockport on September twenty-third. You guys are the first to know. That was, we just did that. Uh, we signed the contract with Maggie Speaks to be our headlining band. So that will come back on the twenty-third of September. With our, and then we have our next meeting on Tuesday, February seventh.
Angela, just certainly, you know, the public for the board members, you know, you've got a casino night, a golf outing, Taste of Lockport. Can you just talk just briefly, you know, wh- what are those events trying to accomplish?
Um, each one? So the-
Or no, just in, in a, as a general sense, kind of pulling them all together. They're fundraisers. But why do fundraising?
So they're fundraisers. So the fundraising, a, a couple of different things that the, the board kind of envisions moving forward. One is, is scholarships. It's something that they've always done. Uh, we give away twenty-five thousand dollars to, to our students here. We also um kind of are, go between a lot of other scholarships as a whole. The foundation itself, um, for this, uh, this school year budgeted twenty-five thousand dollars to give away. But they also are very interested in supporting other groups and ideas and things that might, that might not be, uh, like a new, um, a new club that, you know, the district doesn't pay for, you know, starting up a new club until it's been in existence for a few years. So the foundation can come alongside and help with the startup costs, make sure that those are available to, to offer new and different things to, to students. Um, I, you know, the foundation board members are very interested in trying to kind of leave a nice little imprint, not just on the students, but on the community as a whole. So trying to do events where, you know, bringing awareness and people into the school where, that wouldn't normally come in, kind of use our, uh, facility and our community in a, in just a little bit different way. So the golf outing is kind of twofold. It's fun and then we can honor our scholarship recipients at that event. The Taste of Lockport is more about just kind of bringing everyone together and having a good time. The casino night would be another opportunity for kind of adults to get together and have a nice time. But the foundation's also trying to look for, um, something that we could do, you know, bringing people in and I, I, I'm hesitant to say it too much because I don't know what, what, what we're gonna like land on, but um, just trying to, you know, it's like a tie that community piece. Someone once said, when we were talking, like be the bridge between like community and, uh, school.
You know, sounds wonderful.
Oh, thanks. You should come.
I'm just excited to do The Taste of Lockport. I wasn't able last time because I was working.
It's a good time. Did we, uh, Maggie Speaks is no joke. They were a lot of fun. So, yeah.
You got to do mini grants to the-
We do still do mini grants. Um, this year we've, we've, um, I think we've had three applications. We don't get a lot of applications on that and I, you know, that's good and bad because we want to support whatever the, whatever comes through, but um, you know, it's hard to say, you know, you can't make someone ask you for money. But the, the mini grant's five hundred dollars, that's the cap. Um, and it's kind of twofold. You know, they wanna see a, the board is interested in a, like how many students can that reach? So there's kind of all these things that go with it, but yeah, we're very, yeah, we're happy to support all the different things. It's a good group of people. Proud to be a part of it.
Great. Sign your times.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Angela.
Kathy, you just have to record the time that Mr. Travis left.
All right, um. Legislative report.
Thanks, Mr. Travis. You feel better? Uh, legislative report. Um, well, three-day lame duck session, um, not much happened. But I do think, um, there's just a, a few things to, to, to highlight. I wanna thank board members. Um, you know, it's not, you know, when I make a clarion call, you know, to, to call state senators, I think it's important. Um, just wanna highlight comprehensive sex education and this is across the board, not only the, you know, the, the issues that are in comprehensive sex education, but a- a- as a general pattern, the state adopts standards and oftentimes they're standards, whether it's in science, social studies, math, English. Those standards are usually voluminous. You know, we would need twenty-four hours a day, thirteen months a year to cover most of the standards that the state adopts. What I think you appreciate, we appreciate is when standards are adopted, then we have mandated, um, units of study that we do have to cover. And then through the board, through Dr. Christophero and her work and, um, Dr. Jen Webb Ray and our department chairs, we bring those standards down to what is appropriate for our courses, whether they're semester or a year, where they're located, age of students, all of those considerations. So when the state adopted the national sex education standards a year ago, uh, we had that type of, uh, authority as a board to locate those standards appropriately for our curriculum and our courses. This bill was proposed by a senator to, to mandate all of those standards, um, which has problems, you know, across the board. Number one, we, we, we would need an exclusive course. You know, we teach that in health. We have a lot of other important things we have to work with students on at health. But then also, I think the concerns that have been found in the state about the totality of those standards. You know, we, we want to do, a year ago at this exact meeting, uh, Dr. Christophero did a very fine job of just breaking down what we believe students, um, really need to know at that age, that fulfill the, um, required units of study. We appreciate the choice. Um, so when this came up, there was just a landslide of superintendents like myself calling our senators, the organizations that represent us calling our senators, I hope some of you, and I asked you to call senators, you know, left that voice message and it was polled. Um, so it never made it to the House floor for a vote and we're keeping our, our, our eye on it. Another one that we're keeping our eye on, um, that just, you know, it could, it could have a financial impact, could have an impact in our cafeteria, speaking of cafeteria, is um halal and kosher food bill, um, that has been proposed, just making halal and kosher food accessible, uh, for students, uh, in, in schools. And then also another bill that's making its way, um, it hasn't moved to the House floor, is a new arrival grant. You know, when we see new arrivals, um, to our country, uh, we're, we've seen, um, you know, uh, students in our ELL program that are new arrivals. What are some particular things that might be enacted in order to support those students in a school situation? None of these made it to the floor, but they're all, um, something to keep your eye on. Any, any questions?
Thank you. What is the difference between halal and kosher again? I, I didn't-
Uh, kosher is usually, uh, food prepared blessed by a rabbi in the Jewish faith.
That's right. It's blessed.
Halal is, uh, it's counterpart in Islam.
Yeah. Forgot that the kosher is blessed.
Right. And same, same in halal and its preparation.
All right, thank you. All right, public comment, follow-up?
Okay, follow-up on public comment last, um, month. Um, just as a, a general rule, you know, one of the things we're doing as a board is using some pub, um, public space in the meeting just to talk about the follow-up. Uh, you know, your, your protocol as a board is whenever we have any public speaker, regardless, um, you know, we have a speaker from JJC tonight. Um, you know, we just heard about dual credit. I will, I'll follow up with that speaker or I'll have Dr. Christophero, the appropriate administrator. What we find oftentimes is the five minutes that you're afforded, that's a one-way conversation and it's a limit. You might not have everything said that you want to say. Administrator follows up and then as the board knows, every Friday, uh, last week was Saturday morning, I apologize, um, I'll send you an update. So that's one way between board meetings. I communicate to you what we've learned, um, from public commenters. And so eleven individuals spoke at public comment. Um, really all of that was focused in the truth and taxation hearing and related to, uh, the, the, the tax levy, uh, last week. So, um, um, last, um, month, Stephanie Croy, our, uh, Director of Business Services and I split that, um, that duty. Uh, she spoke with Mr. Jay Rody. Um, uh, she spoke with Mr. Jeff Prisbola, just asked, uh, Mr. Prisbola had a, a question about our annual audit that, uh, Mrs. Croy clarified, um, and, and spoke with them. Uh, Mr. Steve Ballish, Ms. Teresa Hayes also spoke, Mr. Jim Shake, and Mrs. Jennifer, uh, Consolino al- also spoke. Um, and, and reached out to those folks, you know, uh, via email in some cases, phone and email in, in other cases, just to try to see if there's any additional, uh, additional concerns. What I gathered up were just a couple of concerns, um, fund balances, just to remind the board a number of these conversations with, with folks. And then also I failed to mention, there were, um, uh, a number of speakers that Mrs. Croy also followed up with and I'll bring some of their comments in here. Um, but there were a lot of questions about fund balances. And I just wanna remind the board and the public that our fund balances really are split in two different ways. One, to preserve your goal of six to twelve months of cash on hand. You earn financial recognition, uh, status in the state because of that. The other half are what are called restricted. They're, they're invested and then they mature monthly so that we can pay our bills because we only collect and or receive, I should say, we don't do the collection. So just trying to educate folks on, on school fund balances. Um, these are not savings, these are not surpluses. These are not additional revenue like a business might have. Um, they're there to ensure any, you can address any financial crisis you might have. They're also restricted. You, you can't touch them because, for example, right now, um, they're gonna pay for bills in March, they're gonna pay for bills in April. Um, and, and, and they're, they're invested. No increase in the levy. A number of speakers, uh, encouraged in a variety of different ways, no increases, um, in, in, in the levy. And, and just, you know, I would share with you, something that we've discussed, is, is no increase, a zero increase in our levy would, would fairly ensure that you'd have to address as a board, uh, some different issues. You'd have to either, uh, take on some debt. You would certainly be looking at some deficit spending move, moving forward with increasing costs and obligations that you already have. So those are, you, you, you could chip in your six to twelve month, um, cash on hand, but then you would probably lose your financial recognition status and the, the really good credit rating that goes with that. And then I think it's just worth reminding, we reminded a number of people in public comment that our, our levy is the, uh, and tax rate has been in decline for eight years and, um, it's the lowest out of seventeen high school districts around us. So something important. A number of speakers brought up, um, and I tried to address this with a couple of speakers via email, building a new high school. I think the board knows that really hasn't been a discussion that we've had. I know Mr. Lewandowski and I have talked about that, um, quite a bit, uh, you know, for a couple of reasons. One, a, a brand-new high school would be a hundred and forty-five to a hundred and sixty-five million dollars right now. And the tax burden on that, uh, we've costed out to, you know, would be about three hundred to four hundred and fifty dollars per taxpayer moving forward, you know, over a long period of time that we had the bonds to finance that. So we, you really as a board really have not just, not discussed that. And then also citing, you know, citing is really something we've talked about in our demographic projection. It is significant where a, a building is so that people can get to that school in at least a, in the least amount, amount of time. So that really has not been anything, um, you've talked mainly about renovation and maintenance, um, because it's about, you know, one-third the cost of new construction. So you've talked about renovation and maintenance to, to save. Um, staff salaries, a portion going to the tax bill. This was a concern that a number of people, uh, raised. You know, the app, the average sal- salary is higher for our staff, but that's really a reflection of longevity. We have a ninety-four percent retention rate of our staff. We have people who make their whole careers here. Um, and that, that, that's one reason why that is. As Mrs. Kishline knows, we concluded, um, contractual agreements in the pandemic, not expecting inflation. Many districts that are negotiating right now are being asked to meet the inflation rate in those type of raises. Um, so we have very stable, um, negotiations. A number of speakers spoke, spoke, um, about senior citizens and, and certainly the impact of any kind of tax increase of people on a fixed, um, income. Uh, Ms. Johnson spoke about that as a senior citizen and her own particular situation. And I, I just wanna remind the board, when you did your demographic projection, um, what was shared with you is the majority of sixty-five to seventy-year-olds in our area are homeowners and primarily are homeowners, um, of three to four-bedroom homes and are holding on right now to selling those homes, um, because of what we've been through, the pandemic, instability, volatile interest rates. But the projection is probably by about twenty-twenty-seven, those individuals are gonna be looking to sell those homes. And so I would encourage the board, you know, um, value in your community makes it sellable because a three to four-bedroom home is really the most marketable to a family. And families are putting schools at the top of, of their list. Um, program reductions, we had one, one, um, speaker that, um, you know, rejected the idea that there would be, um, you know, not, not, um, having an increase in the levy would, would not lead to deficit spending. I just, you know, Mrs. Croy will be up here in a few minutes to our financial report. Our five-year financial projection is very clear on that. And that there's no evidence that we have program cuts. But again, I just come back to, the financials you'll see in just a moment re- really speak to, uh, what is on the horizon. Right? We do have increasing costs. We don't keep up with those costs if we're not prepared to handle catastrophic costs that could happen. Your focus has been on facilities and making sure that you pay for those facility improvements without rolling that into the levy or going for a referendum that would increase the tax rate or, um, uh, bonds. So those were just, you know, some things. And I, I encourage anybody who's here to really look at our financials. They're very well done by Mrs. Croy. And we're, we're willing, you know, one thing in some of the correspondence that I had with some, some individuals was sort of a rejection of a really kind of old-fashioned idea. And that's the idea. We, a number of the people we heard from are in governmental organizations. And that's the idea of just sitting down and having a two-way conversation, not just a one-way conversation, having a two-way conversation. We heard from a number of people of, of things that are going on in Homer Township and, and Homer Glen, learn about those. But what was surprising to me was that, um, and this, this hasn't been refuted, that, um, Homer Glen itself has a budget in twenty-twenty-three that's sixteen million dollars more than its previous year. I, I think that's an understanding, governance costs, there, there are real costs. So it was, uh, somewhat of my surprise to hear, uh, elected officials criticize you when their financials reflect the same decisions that you've made as a board. And maybe even you've made, I would say, an argument more conservative, but the desire to sit down with those elected officials, we see that, you know, in many of the senators we work with, mayors we work with, of just sitting down face to face and having a conversation. Um, I, I think our community expects us to do that. I think our community expects government administrators and elected officials to be working together. So, you know-
The coffee thing that we had, the principal's coffee.
The creme of coffee. That's just sitting down with folks, you know, Mr. Navarro, you were there. And, you know, I just would hope that people would embrace that beyond their five minutes.
Are we gonna do that again?
Oh, we're, yeah, we'll have a, I'll get you a schedule of those. Um, I just hope people embrace that. It's the way that, that I think you make the best decisions and you have good give and take and you'll learn, right? Um, some other people, some other speakers, I'll be really quick and, um, you know, budget process, some other speakers came and, and shared that they recognized that the, the budget process was a s- was a six-month process. They, they spoke about that. They actually felt it would be inappropriate to turn away that six-month process. A number of, uh, speakers spoke about some strong points. One speaker spoke, spoke about National Clearinghouse, which shows that when our students go off to college, only one percent of them don't return their sophomore year, which is a, you know, very strong metric. And then, um, we had a number of speakers who talked that they see taxes as an investment. They're homeowners, they're hoping someday to sell their home. They feel the most attractive thing is having, um, solid schools with a solid, um, uh, financial footing of those schools and they just feel that, uh, they see taxes as an, as an investment. So that's some of the follow-up with folks. So that's some of the follow-up with folks. But we always follow up with every speaker, you know, no matter what.
Thank you. All right, next we have public comments. At each regular open meeting, members of the public and district employees may address the school board during the public comments section of the agenda. Individuals appearing before the board are expected to respectfully follow the guidelines of Policy 2:230 and Policy 8:30 available upon sign-in. Public comments are important to the board. However, it is customary not to respond on issues until time has been taken to gather information and discuss all options. Lack of action or response does not imply lack of interest in the issues brought to the board. And we have, um, first one, we have a Ms. Maureen Broderick.
Broderick.
Broderick, sorry, I apologize.
I'm sorry, my husband's in Monfort, so it's Broderick.
Hi, and to all the board.
Good to see all of you.
Hello, good to see you.
Maureen Broderick from Julia Junior College. And it's interesting, I did talk to the two students that left that gave the report. And I just emphasized to them that we, and I'm so glad that Dr. McBride and Lori was at our meeting in regards to when our new president, Dr. Namuwa, introduced the 12 by 12 by 12 dual credit, which will be in force for freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors so that by the time they graduate, they will have 12 credit hours and the cost would only be $12. Dr. Namuwa is going forward with that, the board is in favor, in favor of it. All of our feeder schools, 205s in favor, we have all the feeder high schools that are. So I think that's going to be a big help to the AP issue that was raised here. And it will give more motivation and get them almost first semester, you know, through for their, their college by the time they're ready to enter college. But I wanted to say thank you. And that was my only purpose for being here tonight, to say thank you. And glad the dual credit is thriving and getting more acceleration to itself and going to be reaching more students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Communications, Dr. Shaw.
Sure. We've received a note of thanks from Cory Duzan, who is a CTE teacher here, um, just thanking us, for annual correspondence and the support that we provide to the CTE programs. I just also want to add that I did see Mr. Duzan on the news over the weekend. He did a fantastic job just representing Lockport on Channel 7, right, Channel 7?
Yes.
Yeah, 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 you got it.
Okay, I couldn't remember who I was watching. And it was just a surprise to see him there, um, and he spoke very eloquently about what we do here at Lockport and just the different supports that CTE provides, um, our students. And it was great to see him.
Great, yes.
Yeah, he had a very nice spot on ABC 7 yesterday morning.
It was like segments.
Yeah, like it was a good 15 minutes with Judy Sue. So it was really, really, really nice, nice spotlight. Well, we'll get you the, if you didn't see it, we'll get you the video.
Yes, but like I said.
Do not kiss the O's on it.
Yes, I sent Mr. Duzan a congratulated note, you know, on behalf of the board, and he just sent me this email back to me. So I figured, you know, I, I need to share it to the board, so, but, okay. All right. Okay, uh, you see your Freedom of Information requests there? All right, next, um, the approval of your, uh, need a motion then for the approval of the regular meeting minutes of December 19, 2022.
So moved.
It's been moved by, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Shaw, I need a second. All right, it's been moved by, um, motion by Dr. Shaw and second by Ms. Johnson. Are there any questions to those minutes? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Aye.
Abstain.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Lewandowski?
Abstain.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Treasures report, okay.
Anne Lopez Caniva, I appreciate it, thank you. Good evening, board. You, you will see all of the normal things in the treasures report plus some additional ones that are new. So, in the interest of keeping the board informed on what's coming up, I've added some things, um, at the bottom that while they are routine in nature, at least you'll know they're coming, right? You, it kind of gives you an idea of what this, in addition to starting the budget process, which you'll see in the consent agenda, if we start again this month. These are some of the other things that we're working on. The licensed staff, all of our licensed staff have laptops and we lease them on a three-year cycle. And the technology department is working on what the next model will be. Once they figure that out, then I get involved to help with the leasing component and I'll be bringing the lease to the board for approval. Activity bus leases, that is also a, um, routine item from the perspective of we have historically leased them. What we would like to do is potentially make a little bit of a change, um, for a couple of reasons. We did years ago purchase a couple and now they're getting older. And we, we kind of tried that system, right? We, we were leasing all six buses on a, a two-year cycle and then we tried to purchase to see how that would work. These buses do go on longer trips with, with our clubs and, and sports. So, um, it really works out for safety's sake to keep them on a newer, newer than older, right? And we only have two mechanics for our 55, or 50 buses, 51 buses, six activity buses, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, in the interest of safety, what we would like to do is we would like to get, there are two available that we could get on a new lease. And then we would also like to renew two that we already have to replace the two that are old purchasing. That way we'll still have six working activity buses, um, but they'll all be leased again. And, um, the vendor we use, Midwest Transit, um, would purchase those back. I'm waiting on information on what they're worth right now, but that is coming. And we have like, uh, there was a draft attached of what those payments would look like. The lease payments are significantly higher than they've been in the past, but so is everything. So that, I was not surprised by that, hopefully the board is not either. The bus bid also, we have all of our 72-passenger buses, all 51 of them are on a replacement schedule, roughly 10 years, every 10 years we replace buses. Most years we replace six and then every so many years we replace eight. Next year will be one where we're replacing eight. Um, and what we do is while they're on a schedule, while all the buses are on like a predetermined schedule, our mechanics will look at all of the, the status and the, the, um, the quality of the buses at that point in time. And if the eight that were scheduled to be replaced, if maybe one of them from a different class needs to be replaced a year earlier, they'll swap that out because we want to keep the safest buses on the road. So, um, we do, that will be coming, we're getting the bid specs out shortly and, um, we'll get those going. The five-year financial forecast, we've been keeping that in there. That, that particular, um, document that's in there is the one from last year. That is on my short-term to-do list to update that now. April was when we went through it last year. It's kind of like part of the budget process, right? So we're, we're starting tonight with, um, the resolution that the board will approve in consent agenda, directing the superintendent to, or designee to work on the budget. It is actually more of a team process here, which we've discussed a lot. And then as part of that, we look at the five-year financial forecast so that we can start to see what's short-term needs, what's long-term needs, okay? So you'll be seeing that coming in, in the next few months, probably March or April. That'll be updated. The rest of the items are, um, routine in nature. If you do look at the revenue and expense reports, we're halfway through the year. Our, those reports reflect that. We're right at about the 50% in collections of revenue, 50% in the collections of budget. That means we're, we're on track with the budget that we've projected for the year. I think that's all I wanted to point out. Are there any questions on any of the other items in the treasures report? That's a lot of information and I feel like I keep adding more and more, but there's a lot of information that we have to just make sure that you're aware of what we're doing, right?
Yeah. But I, I like that, that you gave us that, those upcoming action consideration items for us to start, you know, looking at in the future, so, okay.
And, you know, just, I think we're putting this report up to give board members just an idea, you know, that we talked about the roofing, we talked about these campus auditorium. You know, transferring th- those funds to pay for those obligations is part of what I talked about earlier. But those obligations are taken care of without, you know, typically in many districts, multi-year roofing repairs, a new auditorium, or even some of the, you know, activity bus, bus bid. That would either be debt or that would be a referendum, um, to, to fund those. What we're trying to do is invest in renovation, remodeling, and then also do that within, uh, the available funds that you have, either those fund balances. You know, they, they can't be the restricted, um, uh, funds that we're using to actually pay our day-to-day bills. But just highlighting and spotlighting those.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. All right, do I have a motion to approve the December 2022 treasures report?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All right, a motion by, is it Mr. Ives?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Ives and second by Mr. Lewandowski. All right, roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Superintendent update.
Okay, before I have Dr. Christopher and Dr. Huntington come on, just, uh, just spotlighting a few things. One, uh, hey, board members, did you download the app?
I did.
Did you download the app? I, I, I am slowly, I have to say, I am becoming addicted to the app. Because it's just, you know, kudos to Mr. Slager, to Mrs. Castillo, um, Deanna Gregorich. It, it really puts, you know, just all the essential things that you want in your pocket. And then also for, you know, different people, everybody in this room might have different data. Some people are only cellular, some people can afford unlimited data, great. But apps are designed to streamline your use. So that's very quick, very practical, it's what, you know, smartphones are used for. Also, I want to rejoin, um, just the mentions of Cory Duzan, really amazing. I've had the pleasure of working with Mr. Duzan in two school districts. And, you know, to be a national teacher, we honored him last year, but to be spotlighted, he's done, done such a fine job. Also, we had a neat experience on Saturday afternoon, we honored two coaches, legendary coaches, part of the 1978, um, state championship. I was kind of hoping Mr. Travis could, could hold out. I was feeling badly that he was under the weather because he was there, he was with his teammates. I did a little video of Mr. Travis where he had to boast that in four years at Lockport, as a basketball player, he only lost four games. And as a, having a father who was a, uh, high school basketball coach, his dream was to play Lockport in those days. But Simeon High School always got in his way. And then, do you want to do your question, um, uh, Dr. Shaw?
Absolutely, so in your, in obviously the board update. So every year, uh, the state comes out with a, um, oh my gosh, what can I think, a report card.
Yeah.
Of, uh, school districts and something that's being added to it for your, um, board notes was the discipline factor. So I wanted to just get a little bit more information on that and what that's going to look like.
Right, now, it, it is not, discipline is not in the formula. It's not in the, you know, formula that, that kind of gives you your summative designation. What it is, is the, through the, um, SIS system, there's a state system where we file our discipline. So the reports that you'll see later in the principal's report, that data actually, Kathleen Gallagher, who's our, one of our data entry people, enters that, that, that goes downstate. Those aggregates, that kind of discipline, the aggregate, not the monthly, will appear. Suspensions, expulsions, infractions, all of those things will, will be aggregated. An additional piece will be, uh, the state's going to look at what's called disproportionality. Is, is there any kind of disproportionate? Students with an IEP are suspended or expelled at a disproportionate rate than others. Women are suspended or expelled at a disproportionate rate than boys. Low-income students, uh, English language learners, um, particular, um, ethnic or racial groups, Hispanic, African-American, white, Asian. And they are going to compel a list of, um, the top 20% of, of high schools that have the highest dis- disproportion. We were not on that list in its first inaugural running last year. I credit a lot of that to the work of people like Mr. Matt Bartley in the room, Jen Lloyd Ray's involved, Dr. Huntington, because we have the Behavior Intervention Center. So many of the infractions that you see, um, you know, we, we just don't believe that a consequence is, is being home, doing nothing unsupervised. It's a lot of time of consequence for the parent. Having students here under supervision, serving a consequence, doing some restorative justice, doing your schoolwork, much better, uh, approach. Did that answer your question? But it won't calculate into your designation form.
I think they'll essentially, it's on the horizon. Oh, it is.
But I, I believe it is, I shouldn't say it is.
They wouldn't put it out there.
My words, not anybody else's words, okay?
The state has been collecting this data for three, four years.
Oh, they've been collecting this data for a long time.
Yeah, I remember when they.
Long time.
When they passed the, the bill to do it.
I, oh, I have another question, sorry. Oh, so are one way that when you say that they're going to report expulsions and suspensions, does that also include internal suspensions or is it strictly out of schools?
Out of schools, so it's lost academic time. And then also they're going to be looking at type of infraction, right? All right. Hey, if I could have, uh, Dr. Huntington and Dr. Christopher, why don't I just stop, work our way through in the next six board meetings, um, looking at board goals. And you have in your board binder, a one-page, um, sheet. It says at the very top, um, uh, curriculum instruction. And, uh, you received something last year, it's kind of in the middle, one page, kind of easy for you to look at.
Color?
Uh, just, just white, just kind of a few pages in there, Mr. Navarro. Looks like this.
What's the tan?
Looks like that, it's right across from your agenda.
Aqua, aqua blue like your shoes.
Aqua blue. There you go, aqua blue. And, um, I, I, I don't want to, you know, um, you know, steal their thunder. But what we've done is taken each of the board goals and reduced them to a, a single-page work plan, description of a work plan of how, how we're going to approach this and make this real. It's also a good time for you to meditate at the beginning of the year. You know, we had a, had a great presentation on dual credit, which is a different way towards college credit. But you have a pretty expansive curriculum goal. You have a goal to, you know, see that students graduate with college credit, military service, and industry credit, or viable employment history, that all students do that. Their college and their career ready. So this also, this work plan also, um, i- is a, is a check for you. Um, what is your curricular goal, your achievement goal? And the way that we did this is we asked a few questions. How can we incorporate student voice into this? You know, we just heard student voice, you just heard from some students that said, "We understand advanced placement, but we think dual credit has lots to offer." Belonging, what we know is if you're in a situation where you don't feel like you belong, you likely are not going to achieve. How do you enhance student belonging? Beliefs, what are the, what are the core beliefs? In this case academically that we have. Broadcasting, how do you broadcast what we're doing? And then finally, you know, does the work plan, and you'll see all of these work plans, identify barriers to the goal. So let me turn it over to, uh, the two doctors and if you could just do some spotlighting. Really, we're, we're, this is designed for you to ask questions. And as always, are we on track? Is this the direction that you'd like us, us to go with this goal?
So, good evening, um, Dr. Huntington and I, our approach to this is we're going to highlight one thing we, we've gotten going with this plan that we think is going well and we're excited about. And then, um, a next step piece and, um, kind of a logistical piece that we're excited about. So, um, one of the things we've gotten going because of this plan is we have AP advisory group of students. So that just started this year, so we had to create an application process. We had to go through the application process, which included, um, a brief application by students. They had to submit a video, they were, um, vetted, there was teacher input and who would be the students on this. The principal voices were heard on this because we wanted a, a nice cross-reference of students, right? We didn't want all students who were taking five AP classes or all students who were brand-new or all students who were seniors, so we were looking for a nice cross-section. Our three AP coordinators have been working with this team, but I would really highlight, Mr. Jason Prairie has really spearheaded, how are we using students in this AP process? So, uh, Mr. Prairie with Ms., uh, Dr. Greenan, they had a social event. The purpose for our AP advisory board was to connect with other students and just let them know, like, if you're struggling, guess what? We've been there too and there's somebody here who can offer you something to build your confidence or a strategy and how to approach it, to let them know that they're not alone because. not alone, because we just got done talking about, these are challenging classes. They also hosted a study session. AP advisory students are able to give input to Mr. Ferrari on what are some of the challenges, and then we can approach those appropriately. Our AP students just came in on January 11th. We had an AP information night and dual credit for JJC rep over there. But really, it was to let parents and students know, what does it mean to be dual credit? What does AP mean? And how do college reps look at, or college admissions officers look at your transcript when they see those things on there? Some of our AP teachers spoke about, like, what's it like to be in an AP classroom? But I would say the highlight of the night, because it was a rotation, was our student speakers. And I'll tell you what, these AP advisory students did an outstanding job of telling students, you can do it, don't be overwhelmed, you don't have to take 10 classes, find one thing you're interested in, and work your way to get to that capstone experience, AP or dual credit. They touted the awesome engagement factors that our teachers do and how our teachers work really hard for them. I actually have a meeting with Mr. Ferrari tomorrow morning to talk about what are our next steps. So we're really excited to hear the student voice, get the student feedback, and the fact that we had so many student applicants to be on the advisory, and they, you know, they were gung-ho to do this work.
So I was wanting to kind of highlight belonging. And we have some students who are, I call them uber-involved kids, right? They're involved in everything. They go to all the clubs, the dances, the sports, everything that they can do. And then we have some other students that don't participate in any clubs or sports or are having difficulty with connecting with community service opportunities. So I'm working with Mr. Lesnar and Mr. Dan Kelly, one of our counselors, and we're creating an advisory group for some student voice to find out, what can we do to better support our students for that, increasing their sense of belonging? Because we know the research is really clear that students that are involved in school are successful long-term. So we want to make sure that we do that. In addition, I know you're used to seeing Lori and I all the time, but we do have some behind-the-scenes crew members that are working with this very extensive one-page. I mean, we made it one-page, but there's chock full of information on there. And that is, we meet monthly, Dr. Webb Ray, Mr. Dusterhoff was not here today, and then we drag Bill in. Bill Thompson in as often as we can grab him. Because part of belonging is having spaces that students want to belong and be a part of. So we know we see that in the K hallway outside of Eltown Grounds. Kids think that that's a great space. In fact, I think our AP advisory group uses that space a lot to have their meetings. So we're looking at other places, maybe underutilized spaces in the building that can be kind of revamped and reconfigured to better support our students and their feeling of belonging. So those are just a couple of the highlights.
How about spaces in Central? There's a lot of unused space in Central.
Central is gonna go through a whole process.
Yeah, I got that. But, you know, that's a good question, Mr. Navara. There's been a really nice job by Dr. Green and her staff. And this is why Bill Thompson, he unfortunately had a family wake this evening, I think way up in Skokie or someplace, using furniture, you know? The furniture, the Veterans foyer is an elegant place, a historic place, but the furniture really speaks to sort of a, kind of a Panera, sort of Starbucks hub. And if you go there throughout the day, that's what you'll find with students. So, and probably the other place that provides that is the port. There's amazing things going on in the port, the library, that's just become really a hub for students and is really a unique, unique physical space. Other questions about this goal? One thing where we could just, you know, when you look at this goal, this is a broad goal. And when I, in October, brought you student achievement results, you know, we look at a broad, we look at National Clearinghouse, that tells us how our students are doing in college, our AP scores, which are very strong, very robust, that's one type of standardized test, graduation rate, grades in key classes, freshman-on-track SAT scores. We're not advocating with this goal, or we don't have a goal that specifically focuses in on one of those metrics. So, you know, one thing we'll always ask you is, stay this broad, work on all of these fronts, or really narrow down? In the curriculum committee meeting we had, really, that was a narrow. That was really a look at things like SAT performance, because we know science and math are critical to that. But at the same time, it was broad, because when you talk about learning the Japanese language, the curriculum committee had a presentation on that, you increase your global competency. That's a lifelong skill, when you understand your place is kind of in the global world. So, you know, this is where we could use, if you're saying, hey, really narrow, we're jumping off into 2023, narrow, stay broad. Right now, tomorrow, we'll have a, you know, we have a team that's presenting about the work that we've done with our tech interns at a conference. And really, every place you look, we're putting more and more students either in jobs, in internships, in the CCC, doing work, because we think if you have that kind of work experience before you leave high school, you're more mature, you have better executive functioning, you know a little bit about the world of work.
I really appreciate that you're really attuned with the students, because they came here and spoke tonight about exactly what you just presented on. So, I mean, it just shows that you're listening. And I appreciate that.
Good, and you know, and the way I looked at it is, good problem to have. They want more paninis, and they want more school counseling, you know? That's not the world's worst thing.
Even their concerns about, you know, the AP versus dual credit. I think that, like, EP has had such a stigma for such a long time of, like, only a certain type of student takes that class, but that's not necessarily true. Anybody can take that class, and anybody can take that test and earn that credit as long as they're willing to commit to it. And I think that, you know, these are great pathways to getting there.
I'm just so curious as to why that stigma shows up, as to why, like, what is it that we're saying, what is it that teachers are doing that, like, some kids are so intimidated, that some AP, like, tests don't even get like?
It doesn't necessarily need to be teachers. It could be the peer pressure too, of, you know, what they've heard.
Yeah, well, then, that's not necessarily a good message.
Exactly, and which is why they're trying to address it, so.
Well, I may have you guys stay up here, but you've made the perfect segue, Mr. Navara, if you don't mind, on this goal. And that's where we, you know, we're presenting these one-pagers to check with you, are we on the right path? But speaking of what Mr. Navara is saying is, just want to share two final things in my report, and we'll jump into the curriculum report, a little slimmer tonight. Equal-opportunity schools, this is something that I was looking at in 2019, and we know what happened and got really derailed. Their work got derailed, but my professional experience, they are the best organization I've encountered for exactly what you're talking about, Mr. Navara, working both with students and with staffs to open up, hey, you are possible in dual credit honors and advanced placement. One of the things that I, on January 13th, I went to a breakfast, many of us have said to equal-opportunity schools for years, include dual credit. That's a college experience. Include honors, and they have. And one of the neat things that they do is, they survey students, they use some of our data, and they create an insight page on every student, so that anyone can look up and see what that student's aspirations, what that student's interest is, who are some adults that they have high regard for in the building? Staff members have an opportunity to say likewise about them. What's their ultimate goal and aspiration? So it's a much richer view. They also project who are maybe some students that could do dual credit, could do honors or AP, but you haven't tapped into them. We've started that process already, but we could even have more left.
How did they figure that out?
What the student says, what the student's standardized test scores are, what teachers say about the student, what the student's grades are. They aggregate all that data together to create a profile.
Is it possible that you can also find kids who are just not utilizing themselves to their full potential?
Oh, for sure. And they're very cagey at working with schools to do exactly that. And expanding rigor, right? A process where, you bring up a really good point, Mr. Navara. What do you want to get is to where, you know, Dr. Shaw is mentioning, that there isn't this mythology of exclusion. It's actually, like, you want to create to a place where, I better take a dual credit, I better take an AP, I better take an honors class. That's what we do around here. And then, just updating you, Central Campus and District renovations, you know, much of the first semester, as the Facilities Committee knows, was devoted to working with a Citizens' Advisory Council on that. You know, we had a lot of architects on that, we had a lot of people in the school business on that. And we did identify a few things, that Central Campus is centrally located. We did identify that renovation of a facility like that would be far less costly than other options, and far less costly than waiting for some of the systems to fail there. So we're now, I'm going to look forward to bringing to the board just maybe a 12- to 15-month process of engagement to really go deeper on that consideration and that issue. Any questions? That's my report.
Thank you. Thank you.
They're going to roll right in. You're already there.
So in our information report, we wrote to you about what we covered on Institute Day at the start of second semester, day on of service for Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, what we did there. And then I already alluded to some of the information regarding our AP information night. But if you had questions, we wanted to answer them, but we wanted to yield our time, and now it's just Ms. Johnson. But, you know, we just had a curriculum committee meeting right before this meeting, and so, you know, we thought if the board members wanted to comment on anything they heard there, to share with you while everything was fresh in their minds, we wanted to make sure we made that space available.
Yeah, we learned about, is it J-leaf?
J-leaf.
Yeah. Which is the Japanese language course. It's an excellent program, because the kids not only, the kids are not only learning their language, they're also learning their culture. They're learning how to cook. They're interacting with students across the seas, and they're going to interchange with them. Yeah, it's interesting. In fact, they have a teacher that's here from Japan that's going to be here for two years. So they get, it's not like, for lack of a better word, fake teaching, they get the real thing. And he tells them exactly how it is, and he shows them, like, they had an example of, they invited students who could come, to come out to school, to go down to the culinary department, and had them to take a recipe that was in Japanese and cook it. And then they had to, they tried and then judged it, you know, to see how close did they come to the recipe. But it looked very appetizing.
I have to tell you, the konamiaki is one of Dr. McBride's favorites.
Okay.
And in Japan, there's a great battle. It's like New York and Chicago, it's the best pizza. But it's Hiroshima versus Osaka.
Yeah.
Who has the best konamiaki?
And one of the interesting things was, and I don't know what it was, but, and I couldn't pronounce it, they were supposed to develop a dish, which, and post their pictures of it out on the website. And companies over in Japan, based on that, would donate to a, for the cause. I thought that was a good community service that they did. So they get a little bit of everything in this class, so. And the other one.
Can you describe the dish? I might know what it is.
What was it?
They can break it down into an omelet to me, but.
Yeah, konamiaki is like, two pancakes, it's two pancakes, and then whatever you want to put in the middle, like vegetables, eggs sometimes. You know, there's lots of ingredients that go in the middle.
That's so cool.
And then the pancake is almost kind of sealed.
Yeah, it did sound cool. And then the other class was math and science plus. Okay. I really thought that was very interesting too, because the concept there is, if I was in a class, and I did not get the, especially in math class, I didn't get that concept, you know, of the lesson that's being taught, they would take me and put me in either math plus or sign plus to get one-on-one instruction or to get a better instruction on how that concept works. They put you in there, and you stay in there till you grasp that concept, you know? So the interesting, another interesting part about that is, parents had buy-in on that, you know? Some parents even called and said, I come, my child isn't in this, you know? Because they see the benefit of it. The science teacher, I don't know his name. Okay. He was saying, which is a valid point of, for like physics or chemistry, the students get to interact with a different teacher, which, you know, when you were in school, sometime the teacher you had, you just couldn't relate to, he couldn't get that concept over to you. But by dealing with a different teacher, you know, a lot of times the kids grasp that concept. I know when I was in college, I had that issue with home economics. The first teacher I had, I just didn't get it. But the second teacher I had, I mean, I got it like that. So it's all about, you know, the teaching styles. So, so that's that. That was the two concepts, right?
So we definitely have the slide decks that we can certainly share with board members if they want to see the presentation. It was really well done.
Thanks, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you.
For sharing.
Say again?
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Good thing I paid attention.
Principal reports.
Good evening, everybody. Second semester is well underway. It's been busy, and even though it's still January, we're thinking about next year. As you've heard, the students are busy picking out their courses for the 23, 24 semester. And I would be mistaken if I didn't talk about this. I sit here as not only a principal, but also as a parent, and listening to the discussion. Having a junior, you know, she was one of those kids that does well because she works hard. So she necessarily doesn't score well on standardized tests and being identified, but sometimes you're dealing with a mindset of a child, you know? And talking to her, I think I kind of have an idea of what education's about, and I kept telling her to challenge herself. And she said, no, I'm happy with doing well and getting good grades in my classes. It wasn't until, actually, her counselor said, hey, I believe in you, you know, have some confidence in yourself, try an AP course. And it was very hard for her as a child to think about, as a student, who really wanted to focus on getting great grades, what if I don't get an A in the AP course? Which she didn't. But for her, it was pushing her outside her comfort zone. So sometimes that's really what it's about for a lot of kids.
That's so wonderful. I like hearing that.
Yeah, and so I would be remiss if I didn't share that story with you, because I think that's a lot of our kids. No, I'm doing well in my courses, I'm content, until somebody gave her a little nudge outside the box. And she's actually looking forward to taking two dual-credit courses next year, you know, as in her planning. So, so those are some of the things that, you know, we deal with as a staff, really trying to push our kids forward and challenging them, you know? But Lori is doing a phenomenal job of helping our staff to see, to push the kids. We're also, so the kids are getting ready for next year. As administration, we're also getting ready for next year. John and I have spent a lot of hours taking a look at candidates for our Assistant Principal position opening at Central with the retirement of Ms. Sermon. So that's very exciting. For us, sad to see Trish go, but very exciting to bring someone into our team. The other thing that we're really excited about, Dr. Green and I are bringing Phil Boyd back at the end of the month. He's going to be working with our leadership groups. As you know, climate and culture is very important to John and I and our buildings. And working with our kids to take a look at how were they connected, building relationships really will increase the success of our students. So that's something that we're excited about. And speaking of success, as you saw in the report, our Fin Arts Department, we are very proud, we had seven of our choir students and seven of our band students, who actually were identified for the all-state ensembles. And we had in athletics, our cheerleading team, girls bowling and boys wrestling were all conference champs. So as you read through, we're looking forward to the rest of the season with all of our sports, and then towards their postseason success as well.
This month, I chose to highlight to you work that I have done, really going back to the beginning of the school year, regarding our senior class. So I've been here at Lockport for 21 years, started out as a social studies teacher, and when I was hired, I was slightly surprised to see that our seniors go all the way to the end of the school year with the rest of the student body. And I say just surprised just because that was just.
And I say just surprised just because that was just my personal experience as a student. In high school, our senior class was released a little early, where I student taught was the same thing. Several friends of mine in education at other schools, it seemed like that was just, seniors were out a little early. Didn't think much of it over all these years. And then just recently, the last couple of years with me being principal, there's two groups of other principals that I work extensively with. Other principals in the Southwest Suburban Conference. And then also a DuPage Principals Collaborative Group that actually Dr. McBride started when he was principal at Niqua Valley. It's just really a nice networking group of principals from the DuPage and Will County areas, where we talk about issues that we're experiencing. So as you can imagine, the last couple of years, especially with COVID, these were valuable groups for me to be a part of. And as we spoke about graduation, end-of-the-year assessments, seniors, I found that LTHS was really the only school out of about thirty who I've worked primarily with where the seniors are are not released early. So it just motivated me a little bit more to explore why. And not just say, well, let's just let our seniors go because everyone else seems to be doing it. I wanted to really take a thorough look in with the principals who I work with to find out what's positive about it, what might still be challenging about it. And to highlight some of the positive reasons that several other schools allow their seniors to be released early include, seen, can be seen as a senior privilege. To cited more time to work with some individual seniors that may have some circumstances going on to help them get to the finish line, so to speak, to be able to graduate. Our staff working on the graduation ceremony. I have some personal experience with this, of course, being an assistant principal for two years and now principal. Graduation, of course, is the culminating event. And my humble opinion would do a wonderful job here at LTHS with our ceremony. And I see how much work goes into that. And seniors being released a little bit early can help devote more time of our staff to that graduation ceremony. And honestly, another reason that principals really liked is just kinda at the end of the year, it was, it just felt like the building was a little bit less stressful with having less people in the building, especially at higher populated high schools like like ours. There was some notes of challenges. Well, it didn't really seem like there was any consistency across the board in terms of do seniors take final exams? Some do, some don't. Some challenges with classes that have mixed classes, because now your sophomores, juniors and now seniors would be off a little bit in sequential time order in terms of end-of-the-year activities and final exams. But it was something that I wanted to bring to our administrative team. We talked about it, felt like it could it could be something positive for us, particularly this school year. If you look at our school calendar, our last day of student attendance is Wednesday, May thirty-first. Graduation is just three days later. So I'll be honest, that was something that motivated me a little bit more to want to try to do this for this school year. So on December twelfth, I spent a day here in the Porter Room talking to our staff at East Campus about what I just summarized for you. And actually, just this past Friday, we send an email to senior parents informing them on a on a couple of items. But to note that this year, seniors are going to take their exams on Monday, May twenty-second. Tuesday, May twenty-third will then be their last day of student attendance. The rest of the student body has school that Wednesday. Thursday actually begin semester exams on that Friday. We then have Memorial Day weekend, and then we finish up on Tuesday, the thirtieth, and Wednesday, the thirty-first. So that email communication was sent home to parents this past Friday. We still have some work to do to talk about how those two days of senior attendance for semester exams, how that's gonna work, which classes they're gonna take their exams on which day. We did make the decision that we are going to still have seniors take a final exam. And I did ask for some staff input and a thought exchange after I had that December twelfth staff meeting here in the Porter Room to ask for some input from staff for us to think, for us to consider some things down the road as well. Some other information in that email that went to parents last Friday was about community service hours. We continue to do all we can to push seniors to not only complete the forty community service hours, but to get them entered. Bless you. And one thing that we are gonna try to do is this year, upon students who want to go to prom, which is on Saturday, April twenty-ninth, the prior day when they pick up their tickets, we are, we want to ensure that seniors going to prom have their community service hours complete and entered upon them receiving their prom tickets. We're gonna communicate that very much these next several months. If there's any students who still are maybe a little short at that point, they will have a meeting with me that day so we can talk about it and and have a plan moving forward. And then for those students who choose not to go to prom, we still want them to be done by that Friday, April twenty-eighth. And if they're not, we'll ramp up our communication with individual students and their parents. So that is a summary of some work that I have done and just to share with you the rationale behind it and what we're going to do this school year.
How many days is prom away from graduation again?
Prom from graduation?
Yes.
Prom's on Saturday, April twenty-ninth, and graduation's on Saturday, June third.
Okay, so they have about.
About a month, a little, a little more.
Cause in the last several years, we had quite a few seniors who had zero community service hours. So what we were gonna do to try to, and they'd be scurrying at the last minute.
Yeah, I I would say to summarize, we've really increased our communication with those students, not individually, as a whole group, student body, but then also individually as well. I think our school have taken, has actually taken on some community service events that we've hosted, Share Fest, MLK Day On, as we've promoted not only community service opportunities, but then the importance of getting those hours finished and complete. We've offered some free gift cards to our very own Eltown grounds for students who are finished. We we actually offered, students who were complete and entered them got a discount on their homecoming dance ticket. So we're we're looking to incentivize and communicate more to help with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
No overnight field trip.
Yes.
The next meeting, can you let us know what the numbers are looking like?
Oh, on a community service?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
As I mentioned earlier, should I jump right in?
Maintenance report.
Yeah, maintenance report. You've got the maintenance report in front of you. As mentioned earlier, Mr. Thompson had a family wake this evening. Right now, you know, just a lot of facilities issues. Productive winter break, lots getting done around here. If you're in the buildings as much as we are, you kinda see everything from ceiling tiles replaced to touch-up painting to lights being changed. Fieldhouse storage, I know that that, you know, things like that are not very glamorous, but relatively important. Think about your own basement, garage or closet at home. I'm not making any comment on your organization. I know what mine look like. They need work. And so just getting getting that done. And then, you know, Mr. Tom said a number of different things. You know, motors, steam valves. That Central Campus were always very, you know, thoughtful, concerned, worried about anything that do, that has to do with heating, the radiator heating at Central because of its age. New equipment for family and consumer science. Stoves were installed, new stoves were installed over winter break, the dishwashers for those classrooms. Take a look at the carpeting in the auditorium. The difficulty with that renovation was not with carpeting. But we replaced the carpeting, the seams were coming up. That was one of the first stages in that auditorium renovation. Rest of that is really going to be sound and light fixtures. But that was one piece that we're doing. Filters and and unit operation, especially when we're indoors, just what's kind of our airflow. And then we, on the horizon, we've got our annual food service meeting with Quest, so. You are welcome. Should I jump into school calendar? All right, inside of, Mr. Ives has already pulled them out. You have three options that we're discussing with people. And you might say, there's really not much of a difference between these. First thing I'd like to share with the board is all three options are aligned with the feeder schools. We we all start roughly at the same time, within a day or two of each other. We all exit for winter and spring break at the same time. We know that's important to families. This particular counter, a little smoother than this year, just there were some dates that we had to work around. So the edges are, we don't have to work around, for example, a holiday in November for an election day. So we're probably going to move back to having parent-teacher conferences in October, a non-attendance day, which is required by our contract the next day. And then on Monday, Columbus Day or Indigenous Peoples' Day that weekend. We still have the very popular day before Thanksgiving as a non-attendance day for students. And this, this really the same day, second semester, from Kashmir Pulaski Day to President's Day to Martin Luther King Day as well. The real issue that we have, if if board members have a thought, are Institute Days. One hundred and seventy-six days of student attendance, and we have four Institute Days. And our calendar committee is very split. You've got a calendar that places two Institute Days at the beginning of the year. One day would be a lot of professional learning and organizing. Next day is really more like a teacher and a department day. That's option one. Option two explores, and three, placing those Institute Days differently. For example, starting the school day with just one Institute Day, putting three Institute Days in the second semester. Start of the second semester, March, and then an April Institute Day. So really, it's come down to where do we put our Institute Days? That's really what it's come down to. Don't know if the board has a strong opinion or just general questions, but that's really what we're we're wrangling with.
You said the teachers were split?
They're split.
Option two.
What do you like about option two, Mr. Galahad?
You mentioned that April nineteenth, we've have a increased, that's, that's the, that's Eid, what is Eid?
Eid, are you referring to Eid?
Yeah, especially since we've had a huge increase in like the Muslim population of our school.
Yeah, I, there are individuals from Muslim community that I'm talking about, talking to about Eid. For example, School District Two Thirty takes the Friday before Eid off. Eid is the end of Ramadan. Now, in twenty twenty-four, oddly enough, the actual day of Eid is likely going to be the day of state testing. As I said, would be very difficult. You know, one thing for the board to consider, it's very difficult to get an understanding of, you know, how many Muslim students we have, because obviously when when people enroll, we don't ask you what your religion is or your ethnic background.
Did sixty-three people take off for April nineteenth?
I don't know if it was sixty-three.
It was, it was not a hundred, it was greater than fifty, is what I remember.
It was. The the other issue with Eid is that Eid moves by the lunar calendar. So it'll be, you know, this year, April, following year, April. Then it'll slowly start to move into March, into February, into January, into December. So, you know, I'd welcome any input or feedback that you have. The way the District Two Thirty has handled this is the Friday before Eid is a non-attendance day for students. And they have a, an Institute Day.
Yeah, that's why I was, that's why option two.
So the Institute Day in in April is kinda what you're thinking.
Do we have any Muslim teachers that this would conflict with?
I don't know, you know, in the state of Illinois, students are, you know, allowed, they're excused if it's for a religious holiday. And, you know, one thing is perhaps we haven't amplified that enough to our teachers to make, to make it clear and explicit to students that if you're taking a religious holiday, Yom Kippur, Rosh Hashanah, Eid, that, you know, someone might have a Christian holiday somewhere in the school year that's very important culturally or ethnically to them as well, that 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 is an excused day specifically, and that we're gonna work with you. That's a, that'll.
I was like asking if there were any Muslim teachers who would.
Not that I know of. I don't know Mr. Kundari.
Possibly, but that's again, that's something we don't ask.
Yeah, we generally, as an institution, you know, as a public institution, we're not, you know, asking people their religion.
Cause I, I don't know. I mean, like, that's true, but if they're taking the day off at the same, you know, it can be inference. It's not necessarily something that we can't, we would be completely blind. But I I'm just like curious, cause that would be really weird for us to say like, okay, let's do option two so that maybe, you know, like it it aligns, whatever. And then there's like a teacher who has to come in on that holiday. It just.
Right, you know, it's really for the board, like, is this, you know, would this be a holiday that you would want to start doing a non-attendance day? That that's really the issue. You know, next year.
There'll be, there'll be other ones that they'll start asking for.
Oh, yeah, that's right, there'll be others still.
We can't accommodate everyone. Yeah, we don't do Yom Kippur, we don't, we don't have Rosh Hashanah.
Right.
I'm just saying, like, if we had to conveniently plan an Institute Day, what's like?
And the question is sort of moving that Institute Day to follow, you know, you know, that holiday will eventually end up in December. It'll end up in November. You know, there's one of two ways you could think about it. One way that you could think about it is, oh, you wanna support that. You could also say, we wanna support that when we can support it. You know, next year, maybe we can support it with an Institute Day. But in other years, we we might not be able to support it.
I mean, like, just truthfully speaking, like, we don't ask it, but when eighty-three people are calling off for a specific date or something, not eighty-three, like, I'm just throwing out a number there. You know, you you can kind of inference it.
Right, and and not everybody who, like, on a day like that with attendance will explicitly say it's for religious reasons, that like, you know, it's, it's, it's hard to, it's, it's hard to pinpoint. Yeah.
And there are also people who wouldn't call off for that holiday.
There are some that wouldn't.
But, you know, it it just gives that like around the ballpark where it's like.
You know, I would just have the board would have to think about it, that that's something you aim for. How would you handle that in the future?
Right.
Yeah, Dr. Shaw, you're gonna.
Yeah, I just, just some thoughts on those Institute Days. So historically, I've worked in two separate districts, obviously. One district actually took three Institute Days to start the school year. But I know that the loss of one of the two Institute Days, like, right now may not seem like, depending on how much work time you're giving teachers, seem like a big deal. But I know that there are a lot of teachers currently asking for that in various districts, having two Institute Days, just cause like one's a district day, the other one is a teacher work day. Depending on how much information you all want to provide your teachers. But just that preparation time for the teachers, I just find very valuable on that second day. So I know the calendar people.
One thing the calendar committee has talked about, and we need to get more input on this, is you don't have that Institute Day at the beginning of the year. Institute Day, first day of a student attendance is a half-day. Just get your syllabus out. The afternoon is is teacher, that Tuesday, teacher work time. Now, it'd only be about two hours. Wednesday would be our usual late arrival for teams to meet, so teams, you'd have some individual times, some team time. Thursday would be your first regular day.
Yeah, we started with one Institute Day.
We started with one Institute. The concern from others is that's just three, that's basically three different schedules in the first three days. And is that not quite get students off on a good foot? Others feel like, hey, it's just a start, we're slowly starting up, you know, so that that's where we're torn right now. There's not, we don't have a consensus yet. Any other strong feelings? You know, we'll, we'll, certainly we'll be coming next month. We're gonna take some feedback from Dr. Greenin and and Dr. Green on what department chairs had to say. We'll talk about it as an administrative council as well, so it has a few more permutations to go through. I do understand what you're saying, that 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 start, that kind of settled start can be very, you know, very helpful.
On a not, on a teacher Institute Day, but on what Dr. Greenin just talked about, I'm looking at May twenty twenty-four. Where would you slot your senior dismissal day?
Another thing we have to talk about.
Cause the last day is May twenty-fourth is last student attendance day. Then you have a week, and then it'll probably be graduation the first weekend in June. So.
Yeah, the proposed last day.
I think if there's a day that you're interested in, you should incorporate it now, so it can be part of the planning process.
It's definitely, the proposed last day for next school year is definitely different than this year's calendar.
Okay.
It's sort of that spot. Two, two things we find with the calendar committee and the board might feel differently. The staff definitely want final assessments before winter break. So that's what drives the August start.
Yes.
There are some people that would like to see us go into the third week of August, the fourth week of August. But that means then you're, you might not be able to get those assessments in. It also means you're going to have school after Memorial Day.
Right.
And the staff prefers, staff voices, let's wrap up before Memorial Day. So in Dr. Greenin's case, what a lot of schools do with. So in Dr. Greenin's case, what a lot of schools do with that kind of end of the year, Mr. Ives, is that Thursday and Friday before are the last two days for seniors, which would be probably something like the eighteenth and nineteenth.
Sixteenth, seventeenth, based on this calendar here.
Yeah.
Because that's the environment I want to, I attended.
That very next week.
East Coast, most, all schools do it.
Right. All right, well, we have a month to talk about it. You'll get more information in your updates. That's your first reading.
Thank you. Uh, I, when did you say standardized testing was?
Uh, it's usually the second Wednesday in April. So this year, it's April twelfth. In twenty twenty-four, would be April tenth, which is Eid.
People said, okay.
Thank you. All right, moving on. All right, do I have a motion to approve, to approve the consent agenda items two to number eight?
I move to approve consent agenda items two, three, as written.
And I'll second that. Are there any questions or discussions? All right, hearing none. It's been motioned by Dr. Johnson, second by Ms. Lopez Cuniva, hearing, uh, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez Cuniva?
Yes. All right, we've already taken care of action consideration items, and we'll move on to policy consideration.
All right, policy. We have Press One Ten, and just always remind the public, Press is, um, part of the Illinois Association of School Boards. It is a service that takes state law and turns it into required, um, policy changes that we have to make. So majority of these poly, policy changes are driven by, driven by, uh, state law. Just a couple, th, these you saw last month, presented to you last month for our first reading. Just a couple special notes. Policy seven, colon, seventy, have already submitted to the state because there are no board objections. We're required to make a January thirteenth deadline on that, and our policy was in line with what the state is asking. Also, between last month and this month, we did make a modification to two policies, five, colon, two fifty, and five, colon, three thirty, to align them to our contractual agreements. For example, the state requires ten, um, sick days, benefit days. We provide more. So we had to do that, that, that alignment to make sure that policy. I also want to draw your attention to policy two, colon, forty. Speaking of student voice, your vote tonight for that policy would empower the board to impanel two student representatives at this table. And, um, our next step would be to start down that procedure of, um, having students apply, um, reviewing students, deciding as a board a target date to bring them on. Is that this semester or when you have your reorganization meeting in May? But it's really to impanel that student voice. They are not allowed to vote. They are not allowed to participate in any way in closed session. Any questions about these policies? Oh, we did, yeah, thanks for reminding me. Um, so there is a policy, four, colon, one forty, that we just got an update last Thursday on, and that is related to waivers. Waivers for certain students, low-income students, students have, military. There was some brand-new update language that came out, and, and, um, Mrs. Croy and I just paused just to say, let's take a look at that. Let's put it in the second group, which you'll have a first reading tonight, and then you'll approve next month. That'll give us enough time to shore that up to be in, in compliance.
All right, I'm gonna just, I need a motion to approve the Press One Ten Group One policies.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Ives. Are there any questions? All right, roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez Cuniva?
Yes.
All right, I'll do a very quick, uh, slide deck. This is the second group, and this is your first reading. So we'll approve these along with the addition that Mrs. Croy mentioned, but I do want to spotlight, just before I do the slide deck, a few policies in here. Policy six, colon, two sixty, it, it clarifies who can file a complaint about curriculum. And it narrows it to parents or guardians, employees, or community members, and defines community members as members of this community, of this school district, as opposed to someone who lives in School District Two Thirty who is concerned about something that's taught here filing a complaint. So it narrows, state law narrowed that.
So an outside organization cannot.
An outside organization, you know, could not. Six, colon, three ten is something we're working on. Dr. Christopher is working on it right now. This is, it speaks to the opportunity for students to take courses outside of the district, online courses, courses through a university. How are those counted possibly on our transcript? Uh, we offer six classes here at East, seven at Central, and we often, often deal with students who want to take more. Um, how do they do that? We broaden this policy, and we'll probably come back to putting some sort of safeguards, some limits, some language on it. We just want to spotlight that. And then, um, six, colon, six, uh, sixty is just, it, it acknowledges the Illinois state mandated units of study. Just to give you a highlight of how important those are, Tony Kandari and Lori Christopher are having the five-year compliance visit on Thursday. It's great. But literally, the Regional Office of Education comes in and will be looking, where do you teach this particular mandated unit of study? We have to provide, um, evidence of that.
Do you guys do a mapping kind of thing?
Uh, we just, we have our, we do, we have to map it out for them. We also have to point them in the right direction. There's all sorts of forms that we have to fill out to point in the right direction, our enrollment handbook, you know, things like that. And then there's just a number of policies you should be aware of, because I think this is a lightning rod, but policy six, colon, six-five, and seven, colon, two ninety, that speaks to social-emotional demands of students. Aaron's Law, um, suicide prevention. So I'll show you these slides just very quickly as a first reading, so that both you and the public can, in essence, uh, just, you know, understand the topics. And if we want to dive into these policies, please just, just let me know. The policy we just mentioned, this is waiver of student fees, where, uh, we pulled it from Group One. We're going to do a little bit more work on it, a little bit more clarification that we got, um, just last week. Bumped that up. Uh, six, colon, one five is just, um, this is updated, um, it's a cross-reference, footnotes, continuous improvement. These were just some, some issues with school accountability, um, that we have. School wellness, nothing was changed in school wellness. This is just legal references and footnotes were updated. Curriculum content, I just mentioned this. Policy updated the final citation. You know, this, this deals with kind of like instruction, and it also deals, um, with, uh, naturalization process, students kind of coming into this country and what they also have to, to experience. Social-emotional, um, development, I just referenced this. Legal references changed, and, um, the footnotes updated. Uh, this is a cross-reference to Aaron's Law, Portman Law. Bringing our own technology, this doesn't really impact us because we provide the technology, but this was updated so that it also includes students who bring their own technology, employees or students, you know, also have to, especially, this is really staff, have to observe. Dr. McBride comes here, this is my personal cellphone. I still have to, with this cellphone, as a school employee, uh, observe the professional code of ethics of online behavior, if I'm using it, um, in my professional capacity. Community resource persons and volunteers, just term change, non-certified to non-licensed. Assemblies and ceremonies, uh, this refers to the very famous, um, uh, uh, event of the summer, Supreme Court decision that a football coach had a right to pray at the fifty-yard line, um, after games. That's an individual right. That's not a, uh, an institutional right or a requirement right. But it is that that football coach was allowed, you know, on his own to pray at the fifty-yard. So different if it was required, every member of the team had to, you know, if you didn't pray, whatever religion, you couldn't be on the team. That, that would be a whole entirely different thing. This is an individual right. It's what I just, you know, mentioned about complaints about curriculum, being confined to parents, employees, and community members. This is the substitution, uh, Dual Credit Quality Act, um, notified students enrolled in mixed enrollment, dual-credit courses, include students who have, have, have not met community college. This also speaks to, um, what we're doing with, uh, non-high school classes, non-classes that we offer. School admissions, student, non, uh, you know, transfers to and from, uh, non-district schools. This really focuses on, um, a liaison. We have to have a specific named DCFS liaison. Student behavior, this is just slight updates, continue on the state's continuous improvement in, in providing services and providing assistance for students with behavior. Seven, colon, two fifty is similar to the policy I just mentioned about we're required to have a liaison for DCFS. Anaphylaxis, uh, these are some requirements that we have in order to handle if someone has anaphylactic shock. So this has been updated. In essence, this is the training, the use, the availability. We have a school prescription for EpiPens. Suicide and depression, this is part of the Children's Mental Health Act. We have to affirmatively, from the background, the IDs that our students have, to presentations about suicide prevention, and then our responses, uh, to it and confidential reporting. Student records, this was, um, updated, that it does give DCFS certain rights to access school records, which are projected under the School Records Act. When investigating DCFS gets a wide berth with, with most things, this includes student records. Any questions? It's a lot of administrative procedure updating. And we'll bring back to you next month the final on our understanding of waivers for military families, low-income families. Really, what that one is responding to is oftentimes, students would qualify as a military family or free-reduced lunch family. Many districts would only key that to, for example, the free and reduced lunch program or a waiver of our three hundred and fifty-dollar fee. But a damaged Chromebook, a lost charger, a lost book, students would be charged. It's more expansive, so we just want to be thorough in what we cannot charge students who fall into certain categories. Any questions?
Thank you.
You bet. I've only got one announcement, but I don't know if you're ready for announcements.
Yes, yes.
You ready for announcements?
Sure.
Okay, one announcement, check your calendar, board members. Uh, we do have an issue in June. June nineteenth is a state holiday, Monday, June nineteenth, Juneteenth. And we typically do not meet on a state holiday when the building will be closed. All of our buildings will be closed. So my recommendation to you would be June twentieth, a Tuesday, or June twelfth, the Monday before. The reason why I say that is I'm concerned if you go the last Monday in June, that's pretty late into June. That'd be the last week of June. So obviously, we'll meet when, when, when it's, it's best for you. But I would not recommend meeting on Juneteenth in observation of that holiday, but we would just have to come up with an additional date, okay?
Do you want to probably, um, email all of us, you know, with those?
Yeah, I'll mail you with the, with the.
To see if, if that date.
If you, if you could check, if you could check your own calendar.
Right now, my calendar's open on both days.
Okay.
Yeah, so the twelfth.
That's it.
All right, thank you.
Motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
With the coat on.
All right. I just need a second.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.